Where's the switch?
Let's call the meeting to order, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the free republic, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moves.
I'll second you. All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Alright, reorganization of the board. Is there a call for nominations for president to serve during the remaining year?
I'd like to nominate Jason Ray for president.
I'll second it. Alright, any other nomination? Alright, let's have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, let's do that by a roll call though.
Oh.
Jeannie?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Elisa?
Yes.
Alright. Congratulations.
Yeah, exactly. Next item would be election of a legislative representative. We hear call for nomination.
And nominate Jason.
That'll do it all.
I second that.
So it's been moved and seconded to elect me as legislative representative. Does that need to be a roll call as well? It doesn't say.
You definitely can.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Can I borrow your protocol for addressing the word? Thank you. Alright, do we have anybody signed up tonight? Thank you. Okay, so for addressing the board, you may present a concern to the board during the time reserved for a hearing, a public comment. This, if this is a case, we ask you prior to the start of meeting, sign in, noting the topic you intend to address. Come to the microphone, which will be over here. Do not, do not reflect adversely on a political or economic view, ethnic background, character, or motives of any individual. Do keep your comments concise, non-emotional, and brief. And with that, we'll go Monica Niemeyer first. I think you're over there. Yeah, and each, we'll go three minutes per speaker.
Monica Niemeyer, M-O-N-I-C-A-N-I-E-M-E-Y-E-R. And so, is that gonna be up there? Cause I'm like not gonna stare at it then.
Yes.
Be pressured. So unfortunately, I lost right, I left my, my note, so I'm sorry, I'm gonna wing it here. I spoke on, I believe it's the last meeting, April 12th. And I gave three informational requests, request for information. And to my understanding, there is supposed to be feedback or a response back within five to seven days. Once again, I don't have my notes, so I can't be exact. I have not received a response. Do we have an idea of when that would be, or can that please be looked at?
Yeah, I think you handed them here, I guess.
Correct.
Yeah, we sent an email and mailed the response to the public.
When did you send the email?
April 19.
April 19.
I did not see that. I, okay, that, I guess a typical thing, I'll check spam and, and all that, so, okay, thank you. And then the other question I had was, on the vouchers, voucher number 907290, Menick Jackson, I believe that's the, the legal counsel. The vouchers for 10,364, a- and I'm just, I'm curious on how this is working. Because since 2018 till now, there are 50 executive sessions where no action has been taken, which is a violation of OPMA. So if no action has been taken and nothing has been discussed, then I guess what are these, what are these services for? How are we incurring a bill with council when you've never informed the public that you're involving council? And I just, I don't know how that works. Okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, this time to reserve, if your public comment not necessarily address questions.
Okay, and that's fine. I got a minute left. How does it work to get the app, to get the response then?
You can come and meet with me in the office.
Okay. Well, Matt, unfortunately, you and I went through that before in a, in a private email, and I've explained to you why I don't wish to do that. So, um, the, this is information that is transparent and before the public. And I just expect that to be that way. If there's a reason that it can't, I would gladly love to see it, and I will apologize and say I misspoke. But all I'm asking is for clarification and a little bit of respect to the community in regards to the transparency laws. And I think about that.
Thanks. Uh, next up will be Andy, is it Sloniker?
Yes. Hello, my name is Andy Sloniker. Get the spelling there. Um, I'm a substitute teacher in Prosser, a parent and a coach. And this year, I have lost track of the number of times I've had to notify teachers and administrators about the use of racial slurs in the classroom. I had a conversation with one young man who informed me that the N-word isn't bad anymore because everyone uses it. Another boy nodded in agreement. Now I know that the principals and teachers have been working very hard to end this idea. And another day, a student wanted to understand what a hate crime was and worried that his family could be affected. Our kids hear these words, these concepts on TV and social media and from one another, but they frequently have a shallow understanding of their meaning. Our kids want to know. They deserve to know. But understanding why certain words and injustices, past and present, are wrong necessitates a deep historical evaluation. It takes a compassionate teacher and a strong curriculum. Our teachers bend over backwards to create a safe environment where sensitive and challenging topics, such as the long legacy of racism, can be discussed. They work day after day confronting cruelty and upholding kindness. If a child hits another child, we don't stand back and say, it's okay, you are free to decide if you wanna hit people or not. We want to graduate students that will go out and be successful in the world, and the world is paying attention to us. Doctors and nurses need an understanding of how racism affects the maternal mortality rates of black women today. Engineers and city planners must grapple with the ways that leaking lead pipes and garbage dumps disproportionately affect marginalized communities in our city, in our state, and in our country today. The colleges that educate our students after they leave us expect us to have started this work already. This looks different in elementary school versus high school, but our kindergarteners know that hatred isn't neutral. They know that hitting and kicking and biting are harmful. They know that words matter. Kindness matters. Now racism is wrong. It exists today in our schools, in our state and in our country. Our kids are listening, and when our school board takes a neutral stance about the morality of racism, whether that be 250 years ago, 80 years ago, or today, then our students will walk away understanding that it's okay to be actively racist. To use the racial and ethnic slurs in their classrooms and in the rest of their lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Blake Sloniker.
Thank you, I'm Blake Sloniker. I use he in pronouns. I have a PhD in US history with a specialization in the history of race and sex in the United States since 1945. I wanna talk to the race and sex in the curriculum draft policy that's in the, in the agenda. First, the policy process has not been inclusive. The board has been aware that the community and teachers want to be involved, and we have a draft already of a policy that's in the agenda that did not have any participation by those people. That's problematic. Two, the draft is dishonest. Points one through eight are copy and pasted from President Trump's executive order in September of 2020 on combating race and sex stereotyping. There's no citation, no attribution. The document claims to be aiming for political neutrality, and yet it's copying and pasting again without attribution from the most highly politicized figure in the United States, regardless of whether you agree with him or not. Putting that forward without attribution is problematic. I'd like to know how it became the, uh, the case that this draft policy includes that. Uh, and I'd like to know who's responsible for doing that, and I'd ask that they step away from participation in this process moving forward. Last, I wanna say that, or not last, excuse me, the policy serves to, uh, to create a culture of fear among teachers about exploring quote-unquote controversial topics. Prosser schools are filled with thoughtful, intelligent, challenging professional teachers. They know how to teach. The eight bullet points in this document address imagined crises that don't actually exist in the Prosser School District. Their expressions of grievance and fear mongering. Their attempts to muzzle teachers and therefore to prevent students from exploring the most important issues confronting society today. Questions of diversity and equity and inclusion and justice. Claims about eliminating quote bias, opinions, and political agenda and quote instruction that should be neutrally presented are only designed to inspire fear in teachers and to prevent them from discussing topics that are the most important thing. The sole purpose is to preserve the status quo and to focus on things that are quote neutral that preserve the status quo. Fourth, this document makes a mockery of critical race theory, an important field of study with decades of tradition, decades of knowledge created by hundreds and hundreds of scholars. I'm not gonna use my time to talk about what critical race theory says other than to say that it is not about identifying people and naming them as racist. It's about identifying and understanding the traditions of race, how race is constructed, how it changes over time. Last, I'll say this. The idea that students should never feel guilt, discomfort, or any other form of psychological distress in their education is ridiculous. It's offensive to teachers, it's offensive to students, it's offensive to me. Controversial issues need to be explored. They need to be explored in safe and equitable environments that this policy very specifically aims to destroy.
Thank you, Blake. Uh, last up is Elise Means.
Hello, everyone. My name is Elise Freeponds Means, and I live at 13014 South 1538 PRSW. Here's a minute. I have lived in Prosser almost all my 60 years. I completed grades one through 12 in the Prosser School District, and I am a 1980 graduate of Prosser High School. As director of the Prosser Historical Museum, I am passionate about the preservation and the communication of history. My work at the museum has been the, the apex of my, uh, professional career, and I am honored to be, I suppose, your town historian. Now Winston Churchill in 1948 spoke the truth. He said, quote, "Those that fail to learn from history are doomed to repeat it." I believe that you, the members of the Prosser School District, will probably approve the draft entitled Race and Sex in the Curriculum later this evening. I do not believe that my words will dissuade you from doing so. Nonetheless, I wanna share with you this quote from Tony Junt. He's a critically acclaimed British-American historian, author, and professor of history at Cambridge, Oxford, the University of California and New York University, and this is what Tony had to say. Quote, "The historian's task is not to disrupt for the sake of it, but it is to tell what is almost always an uncomfortable story and to explain why the discomfort is part of the truth we need to live well and live properly in society. A well-organized society is one in which we know the truth about ourselves collectively, not one in which we tell pleasant falsehoods to one another. It is my hope that teachers and students within the Prosser School District will be permitted to teach and learn history in a matter that is free, free from omission, concealment, ambiguity, and perhaps most important fear." As Jefferson once said, quote, "Honesty is the first chapter in the book of wisdom." May the students in this district read from the book of wisdom. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak."
Thank you, Elise. Just to be clear, that is a discussion item. It doesn't go onto action tonight. It, it's bringing it back in, into the discussion room. We kinda got away from it back in October, and it's just bringing it back so we don't just forget about it and lose sight of, of where we started. So that, that's why it's, why it's here tonight, so. Blake, is there anything, anybody online? Very good. We'll move on to uh, student report, student rep reports. Noah, you're here.
I, uh, I have very little. I would like to reflect on what Mr. Sloniker said. I, I have noticed that too. It's something that's very, everyone knows that using slurs or whatever it may be, whether it's in a racial context or in orientation, sexual creed, whatever it may be, is wrong, but I don't see a lot of enforcement around it because it seems like it's part of our culture again, which it shouldn't be. So it, it, it may seem like it's an isolated incident, but I mean seeing that she's in classrooms every day, every other day, whatever it may be, and I'm in the classroom, hope every day. I see it as well, so I know that it does exist in the case of. And, uh, I have my.
Okay. Is Christina or Bianca online?
They're online, yeah.
Christina, do you have anything, if you can?
I am online.
Do you have any report?
Um, not much, just, just speaking about how it's my senior year and we have like a meeting this Friday of like our expectations of graduating, and I'm just really excited to graduate. It's just a lot to look forward to.
Very good, thank you. Bianca? Nothing from Bianca, we will move on unless she's trying to unmute. Uh, so next it's a approval of consent items.
With the motion, we approve the consent items as presented.
I would ask that we remove the April 12th minutes. There was a typo I didn't see until today, so I'd ask the house to remove it on the next meeting.
Can, just out of, can we make that, is it a simple?
I think so. I emailed Selina and Matt, so we did a roll call vote, and the yay was typed Y-A-Y, which is like yay, not yay, and I think it's,
It's kinda yay.
I think, I think it's important, our minutes are yay, right?
Alright.
I'll go ahead and second with the, uh, with the, uh, revision that Elisa requested.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded for consent agenda, but removing the April 12th, uh, regular minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I apologize for not catching that as well.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Action item A, stepping stones group contract.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the stepping stones contract. I'll second.
I had some questions. So, this contract is dated, and it's going to start March 30th, and it is April 20th. First.
Six.
That's today? No.
Twenty-six.
I don't even know where, um, and I'm concerned that it's late. Um, I'm also concerned who is currently providing the speech therapy services for the middle school and the high school.
I'm sure Cindy Dean's on, my. We do contract out for SLP services just because of scarcity of the position.
So this is for tele speech therapy, is that right?
Yep.
And then are we still using tele speech therapy at Heights, or am I, is that incorrect?
Show to here. I'll have to get your answers to that.
Okay. And then we are, we have hired an in-person speech therapist for next year, is that correct? Was that on a few weeks ago for approval?
Uh, I believe so.
And what school will that speech therapist be at?
That's, a lot of that Cindy Dean's department. I will, like I said, I'll have to get answers to those questions for you.
I, I would like to wait and table this. I'd like to see if it's possible that we have um, more information about our in-person speech therapist that'll start next year, and then will we continue to contract with Michelle Lowry as well? With the hire of someone in the district?
Uh, depends on how my students are identified, but I would probably say yes, if you will.
Okay, so that would be Michelle Lowry, and I'm not saying there isn't a need for more, but I just would like to have more information of the who's gonna be where, and if we can have in-person versus tele speech therapy, I think that's so important. I think of all the things that need to be in-person, speech therapy is critical. So I would ask that we table this, to have more information.
I'm not so sure that there's a need to table this. Can't we just bring it back, bring it back to more information, but continue ahead with the contract?
Um, I guess I thought that's what table meant.
Yeah, if you tabled, if you, if you table it together, more information.
Well, I, I just assumed, go ahead and approve the contract and then just ask Cindy to provide us with additional information, but.
About the structuring.
Uh, yeah, about the, uh, how the, the contract is structured later, but let's go ahead and approve the contract now.
I would, at this point, vote no on that.
Okay.
I have a bunch of questions.
Also.
A little bit related to what Elisa said, but also some other, I guess, cost benefit questions.
Okay, so we're not using this person at all now?
If I can chime in for a second, I just, I was trying to pull up the contract. We have a current contract with stepping, the stepping stones group for a speech language pathologist that we pay a charge per hour.
And how long? How long does that contract get for?
This one. July 31st.
I think we entered that, did we enter that last summer?
The fall.
And I think that, that was gonna be for students at Heights. I think that's where I.
So this, I haven't had a chance to review that. Is it for a separate location? They might be trying to increase them, um, increase, increase the need. Across the district, we've been trying to recruit our own employees, but that's really, really hard to do. And so I think whenever, and I'm just speaking out hypothetically from what I've heard, but when they come, when there's an opportunity to bring on additional help, just the availability, they usually try to. So I'm guessing that's what this is. You have to talk to Cindy Dean. And Diana, I know, I don't know if Diana, I think she's gonna be online, she might know more as well.
We can table it and bring information back.
At least we're good till July.
Yeah. I'll go ahead and pull it.
Cindy Dean. Be here.
I am here, but I think most of what everyone's saying, I mean, there is a lot of questions. I think that keeping the teletherapy is to maintain services, but also not pay all the extra, more expensive services that contract costs we're paying to Michelle Lowry. Adding Courtney back is Courtney White, who we hired, I think, a week ago, helps with that, but we still need probably two speech therapists of our own that we don't have.
So, I guess then, Diana, my question for this is, you know, I'm not saying that it's not warranted or needed, but if we, if we've hired one, if we have, you know, Michelle Lowry, I, I'm just wondering, you know, what is our, like what benefit, are we getting the best bang for our buck as a speech, you know, speech therapy? Is there other avenues?
Yeah, I think if we can't find our own people, the avenue is to contract. Because we have to provide the services, so if, I mean, we, we've had the jobs, we were posting, we were able to hire one, which actually is quite, quite lucky. I do know that, um, you know, they are dealing with a lot of students that have needs. A lot of times, the speech therapists are, have to do a lot of the, they have to do all the paperwork management, the goals and those kinds of things, and so planning the services that might be delivered by a pair of some of the time. Cindy really needs to, that she could come back and talk about caseloads and all of that. Because I, I just can't answer that.
Yeah, it's good, Cindy Dean, I would recommend what Director Riley had mentioned before, that we, we can have Cindy Dean come back and present all that in person is, is a, you know, you guys have the instinct about is, is best when we can, but there's also compliance and, you know, we need to meet whatever the IEP says for the, for the child, so. Yeah, we'll get, we'll, uh, schedule it for next meeting and have her be here.
Okay. Then I will pull my motion.
Do we need a motion to table?
Uh, sure.
Move that we table this contract until the next meeting, and the stepping stones contract.
I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. So we'll move that to the May 10th meeting. Yeah. Alright, next up is, uh, item B is vouchers. Any questions regarding vouchers? I have one. And I don't know if Amy, Ami's not here, but I, I did see that we had a few towing bills for school buses. I, I don't know if she's online. I mean, it's not super important. I'm just hoping, I know we got the, um, new buses coming, but just wanted to see where these were at on the replacement's schedule. And if this is an ongoing problem with these two particular buses, so that was my only question. But, that's all I have.
I had a, kind of like a comment, actually. I was, I was going through this, um, last night, and I just found it again. Under 90729, there's a Rolodex on there, and I don't think I've seen a Rolodex since I was at my great grandma's house.
It's a history prop.
I did, it, it just kinda baffled me as to who's using a Rolodex in these states.
I did have a question. 907297, the planet turf. Sorry. 907297, planet turf, $4,692.
I mean, I, it says what it's for, but it doesn't inlay instructions. Have to get back to you on that one. I'm guessing something to do with the.
Okay.
With that here and that address. Fertilizer, or it just has to be. It's for fertilizer.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding vouchers?
And Ami is, um, logged in.
Oh. Well, I think we can move forward. If there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I want the motion we, uh, asked the vouchers as presented. I'll second it.
All those in favor of approving the vouchers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And whenever Ami's available, maybe she can answer that. And whenever Ami's available, maybe she can answer that.
Ami, are you online?
Um.
I don't see her.
So next up will be out-of-state travel request, uh professional learning communities at work institute.
So this is the conference that I told you guys about, that um the school improvement teams at Jesse, I'm at Jody and Michael's buildings will be attending, there are three different choices on there, but that's because they're all filling up so fast, I had to put them all on there so that we could go to one of them, whatever remains open. I did initially say we were going to Minnesota, but that was, there was some conflicts because that was in July, so these three options are in June.
Uh, Diana, is this similar to the one they just went to? Is it part of the same?
Um, that's which one are you talking, oh, you're, yes and no, um, the, the, the thing, the work that we've been doing, like, they need PLC structures in place to be able to do the work they need to do, to work and really um look at student learning, look at how the assessments, plan for instruction, they have to have PLC structures and do that effectively. And um both Jody and Michael's building need some extra support in, in um learning what PLCs do and how they should operate. So um this institute has a really, really strong reputation, um, I think actually maybe Brian Bailey was there when, had attended when he was in Wyoming, but uh this is one of their, one of their three goal areas they're working on for school improvement is implementing effective PLCs.
One of them's about, one of, the last one was about best instructional practices.
Yeah.
This one's about consistency and alignment from classroom to classroom. So are we doing, you know, are we engaging in the most powerful strategies that we can? You know, high leverage strategies for students, and then this one is, is every student in every grade and every classroom getting the same type of, same quality of instruction?
And if, if students are struggling, what are we gonna do about it, that's, you know, what's the plan, what's the next step, so um it helps us to align our curriculum, which is, is one of the, the things that is on, will, will be on our um strategic plan when it's done, that's one of the um areas that had, had a lot of sticky dots, so this will help those two buildings with implementing those processes, because it really is a big step in, in improving student performance.
Is it possible that um when this, you know, this is approved and completed, that uh they can come back and uh present to the board kind of the overview of what they learned and how that's going to affect um learning in their schools?
Absolutely.
And can we do that kind of retroactively for the one they just went to?
We can do that for any that you guys want us to do for sure, absolutely.
I personally would like to see that, see how it will be implemented and used and um moving from there, so.
How is what we're doing now different than what you're going to learn to do?
So, right now, um, the Kevin Gilman's building, um Je- Jesse's building's partway there, but we have to implement PLC structures, it's how you help teachers work together to see what students are struggling with, um, to plan for, you know, instruction that's going to impact their performance. Eighty percent of, of intervention should be done in the classroom, and this is those structures that help do that, right now they, the teachers meet, but they are not working in the capacity of what a professional learning community does, which is really all around um student, improving student learning and uh impacting teachers' instructional performance to improve student learning, so they don't, they don't really have, uh, they have teacher meetings. Um, not necessarily PLC, they're not necessarily doing PLC work, and if Jody or Michael are there, they could elaborate on that.
Yeah, I can jump in, so those Wednesday early releases, teachers get together and they collaborate. And so there are two components there, process and product, and so how are they working together as a team, and what are they choosing to engage in? And then what are the work projects, so oftentimes it's uh common assessments, common lesson plans, data review, planning with data, um and so working just around what kids aren't meeting standard, and then how should we intervene? Um, so that, you know, you would think that working in a department, working in a team is, is easy, and even setting an agenda for these meetings would be easy, but um you have professional practitioners who have different beliefs about instruction and what kids need. And really, the, the work is trying to get them to work together, um to make decisions for kids across grade bands. And so um they talk about horizontal and vertical alignment, where every kid, say at fifth grade is getting the same thing, but those also dovetail, fifth grade dovetails with fourth and and sixth grade, um, so there's a lot of work that goes into it, uh and then even at a building level, to make sure that teachers are really working together. So.
I think the other thing I would add to that, it's, it's, um, we're working, gonna be working next year on a district-wide initiative around having really clear learning intentions um and success criteria for students, because it has a high impact on student learning. And um there's many, many processes that have a high impact on student learning that would happen in PLCs, but if we don't teach people how to do it, um, they're not gonna do it. And so this is the, this, this opportunity is to take a group of building leaders, so that they are, and, and there's, they're choosing leaders that would impact multiple, you know, multiple different PLCs. You know, um, different grade levels, different contents, and if we don't teach people how to do it, or help them learn how to do it, then we can't expect them to do it. It's not something that a lot of our teachers ever learned in college, because even people coming out of college very recently, um it's, it's, it's not something, it's something they might learn about, but they don't necessarily learn how to do effectively. And they, the, both Michael and Jody have their learning improvement money that they've received because of their student performance, so they are using their funding for that, or some of the funding for that.
Thank you, Diana, uh, any other questions for Diana? I'll entertain a motion, there is one.
I'll make a motion, we approve the out-of-state travel requests for professional learning communities at work institute.
I'll second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, uh.
For the bus.
Oh, okay.
And so actually, the bus wasn't broken down, it was in the middle of turning, like turning around, and it got stuck in the mud. And the first towing company came out and tried to spend about an hour doing it, they were not properly equipped, unfortunately, so they had to call a different company to come in, so both towing bills are for the same bus.
Same incident?
Yeah, and it was not mechanical.
Just seen mud tires, huh?
Yeah, um, Ami is online now, if you have further questions, but I would be glad to.
That's all I had, thank you, appreciate it. Um, item B is twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four advancement via individual determination or what is called avid agreement. Diana, it looks like you're up again.
That's me, um, the, these next two items are two yearly avid contracts, um, they are paid for out of title one, because the avid supports all students in our district. So this is our agreement, and they provide us with, you know, professional development services, we have access to all of their uh modules to use with professional, with teachers, um, we also get things like avid weekly, which is a kind of current event readings that teachers can use in their classes, and so and yeah, we've been doing it for a while, maybe fif- fifteen years, I don't know, it's been a while.
I make a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four advancement via individual determination avid agreement as presented.
Can I add, can I add on a wee to say D and E for approval? Both, both items.
Yeah, let's even do both. I'll second the motion to approve D and E.
Yeah, D and E.
Of the action items.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the avid agreement uh for twenty-three, twenty-four items, uh, action items, D and E, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, Heritage University College of Education Field Placement Agreement.
So the next two are also mine, um, there's, there's, these are basically student teaching agreements, they're different, because one is a traditional route, student teacher that goes to college and then needs a student teach. The other, the second one is for the um alternative route masters and teaching candidates that, that that can teach, work and teach, um, while they're doing their master's degree through Heritage. So that, these are just kind of those normal agreements we do for all of our universities for, to allow folks to student teach with us.
I have a question, Diana, how, I know we approved an agreement for student teaching with um Grand Canyon University, I think at the last regular meeting. Are, are we working with any other universities for student teaching?
Um, so our current, the agreements we have either in place or are currently being renewed, Heritage, Central, WSU, Eastern. Uh, we have Grand Canyon, we have WGU, University of Denver, I, um, for counseling, um. Once in a while, we get some other uh universities that aren't, we don't, don't have as common agreements with, we've uh have the University of Washington, um. Sometimes, sometimes we'll get some from a, from, from some other areas, but those are our main ones.
Thank you.
We have a lot, and that's where a lot of times we, those pre-service teachers are the ones that, you know, that we have an opportunity to support them and see how they work, and, you know, we hire a lot of, a lot of those folks.
I make a motion to approve items F and G, Heritage University College of Education Field Placement Agreement and the Rita Practice Residency Item.
I'll go ahead and second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve action items F and G, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, um, action item H would be the first reading of policy and procedure, three one one six, students in foster care.
That's me too. Um, we, we talked about this at the last meeting, uh, this is a policy, um, a recommended policy, but it's not required, I think it's important for us to have it in place, we do have students in our district that are in foster care.
I move that we approve the first reading of the policy and procedure, three one one six, students in foster care, item H.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the first reading of policy and procedure, three one one six, students in foster care, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
I'm done for a while.
So that'll come back at our next regular meeting for second final, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, item I, policy and procedure fourteen hundred, meeting conduct, order of business and quorum.
This could be a frustrating as well, um. Selena and I took a crack at it and tried to draft on it, and so we're, we're looking for feedback. You can vote to table or vote to approve the first reading, but or if you wanna yeah, like I said, table and bring it up at a different meeting, but we we tried to draft on what we heard at the last meeting, or what we understood, uh, what the board's direction was on it. Um, so, yeah, we're looking for feedback, so we can adjust it again to meet the board's desire.
I would like to see it come back with the current policy in place, so we can compare and contrast.
Okay.
To what we have now, I don't know that it's that much different, I, I pulled it, take a look at it. I think perhaps what we already have is sufficient, we just need to make sure that, I think we're all familiar with it and following it. Um, but I think that would be good to have in the packet, to have the current one and the new.
So you want a next meeting, or do you want an end work session to talk about it?
We can also do like attract changes on it as well. So, uh, on the margin, you can see exactly what was changed and what we populated the spaces with.
I think that'd be great.
Okay.
Um, only question I had, and I, I did like some of the language, but do we not need to list the work session meetings? On this policy?
I
Unless I didn't see it.
Regular. We classified them as regular meetings, we put them on the calendar, um, I know that that was in or uh last, last time we touched this therapy, I don't wanna say that we put that in.
Yeah, and I don't think this is
That it reflects that, this draft.
Yeah, I don't think it reflects the study session.
Okay.
So maybe we can bring it back the next meeting, next month, and but other than that, I had, I was fine with the language and um some of the other stuff, so. Any other questions?
No.
Yes, I'm good.
Okay. All right, last action item is a donation request for the lilac parade.
I'll make a motion to approve the donation request for the lilac parade as presented. I'll second.
I had a question, I didn't understand why we had to approve a donation request from the music boosters to the band program. It seemed like, is that my understanding of what's happening?
Our board policy says anything two thousand dollars and higher has to go through board approval. Um, on that note, would the board be um interested in increasing that to five thousand, so that we don't have to bring it to you as often? It's really about moving the, uh, we always give it to the board, but it just, it gives the ability to actually deny it, and say, no, we're not accepting that, you know, it needed, send it back or don't accept it. Um, it really just gives you that, kind of that first level review. Um, a lot of other districts have a minimum of five thousand, some are as high as twenty-five thousand, but those are more for the larger districts. So it's really up to you, I can bring the policy back, or be just, whenever there's two thousand dollars or more, we'll bring it to you for official approval.
I think that'd be, it'd be good to look at that policy, it just seems like it was unnecessary for the band to have to go through these loops to get to the parade.
And I, I think to go along with that, um re- look, re- relooking at, if we can do it in combination, the donation and the like GoFundMe, the electronic uh policy, maybe we can review those, you know, at a future study session, so.
Great, I was hoping that we could bring that back, and maybe allow GoFundMe going forward, I mean, right now it's restricted, so we can't use that as a platform, but um I would love to come forward with our
I think because it costs money, right?
It does cost money, uh, and anyone who's got a credit card costs money too, even for us, even through the platform that we have now, and our platform isn't as easy to use nationwide as um GoFundMe, GoFundMe. So if we were ta- able to significantly increase donations nationwide, it would maybe be more beneficial, even if it costs us a little bit more. But anyway, we'll, I'll bring that back for a second.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so it's been first and second to approve the donation request, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Um, all right, discussion items. Um, so in our packet is the draft. Uh, we, we saw this uh in the fall, and it's, I think it's good to bring, bring these things back, so we can continue to have discussions and move forward. Um, we have plenty of people talk about it tonight, um, but I think we should move forward and have something ready, you know, by the start of next school year, if that's the direction.
Yeah. Just as a response, by no means were we trying to short circuit or shortcut a committee out of this, we kind of agreed to that once upon a time, that we would set up kind of a study committee, um, that would make recommendations to the board. So, yeah, we're still seeking to do that and gain feedback. This wasn't, I, I think that there were, this kind of came out of the whole, the genesis of this was that other districts in the region were doing policies um like this, Richland, Kennewick, um, and there were a couple board members at the time who were interested in it. I think that committee will be able to make a recommendation um to the board, to say aye or nay on it. Um, it is, I, I can tell you in the case of Richland, um, it was highly contested. Um, and they had, they had people on both sides, I watched the board games uh when they were doing it, so um I believe even the ACLU got involved at some point, so um, yeah, it, it just uh I, I think slow is probably best, uh, would be my recommendation, take it slow. I, I think slow is probably best, uh, would be my recommendation, take it slow and then representative, um, kind of the. You get details also into this. And then the director orientation component and the director seat that's open. That, you know, boards make decisions about policy. And so, um, be that as it may, we have openings that people can share and weigh in and, have the authority about, to govern, um, what takes place in the school, so.
I agree.
I would like to see a committee, and I think also if there's a plagiarism issue, I think every, you know, every line should have a citation as to where it came from.
Suppose I, you know, maybe we could start working on that, you know, sooner rather than later, so.
I would prefer that.
Uh, let's see. Next item for discussion is policy and procedure, um, eleven, twelve, director orientation.
Yeah, and this was to review and, if there's feedback on what you included in that policy, um, that we can adjust that. Uh, like you said, we have a director seat open, uh, to my knowledge, we've received one application at this point. And the board was going to appoint, um, May tenth. Was what the, what the timeline on that was, so. Uh, it's a shortened timeline. I know it was in the process record bulletin today. Uh, is there any feedback on this particular policy of eleven, twelve?
I have some feedback. So you've got a new board member orientation checklist. And maybe you got some stuff, because we were elected at the same time. I did not get an ID badge. I did not, I don't care if my photo is in the district office, but it's on the checklist, so it's going to be there. I don't have business card. Um, I guess this is my nameplate. That's great, people. Let's see how to spell my name, I suppose. Um, but I think we need. Oh, you got a current district BU. I'm not sure what that is. Um, I didn't get a copy of collective bargaining agreements. Um, staff directory. So maybe we could go through this and make sure Jason and I. And I don't know, Genie, did you get these things?
I didn't get all of them, no.
Okay, so let's make sure, and maybe we can do that when we bring on a new person.
Sure. Some of them are accessible online, and then there were things that we've got away from as a district, like ID badges. Um, business cards, I haven't printed business cards mainly because, there are other ways to foster contacts. One of the reasons why I didn't is we were going into budget cuts. And I thought it was, um, kind of an extra expenditure that wasn't necessary, so.
Let's just take it off the list then.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, I, there's a lot of things that probably when this was done in.
Yeah, like the wassail.
Yeah, I was adopted in two thousand, um, most of the stuff is, like. Uh, most of the stuff is online and, and accessible. It's just, you know, uh, maybe instead of actually providing it, just provide the avenue. You know, the, I do think it's important that, you know, we make it a priority to, yeah, um, you know, visit with Amy. And, you know, and, and the budget and learn, kind of, you're never gonna understand, you know, you gotta be here for a long time to kind of work through that. But at least we, if, you know, that person can have a relatively good idea, on how the budget works, you know, and, and stuff going, especially as we're going into budget discussions. You know, and it probably would, I think it'd be, should be very well recommended that they visit the buildings. And, you know, not only the schools, but transportation, the maintenance department, all that stuff, so they can get a feel for, from this, and what we're, what we're doing, so.
I really appreciated going in and spending, I spent two afternoons with Craig, Amy's predecessor, and for me, it was very valuable.
For sure.
Because you don't know how a school district budget works until somebody shows you. I was asked for a business card one time and I wrote my name and phone number down and my email for them. So, I don't see the necessity in.
Yeah, I wouldn't actually mind going over this entire policy and just striking stuff and.
Making it priority for getting updated.
Whether it's, uh, on the sheet right now, just crossing stuff out, or if it's in an email or whatever, let me know and we can manipulate it and then bring it back.
Again. Any other questions or concerns on that? Alright, uh, reports. Amy, you're up first.
Right, so, um, this is the busiest time of year, you know, going into budget. Uh, we're still under. And it has to wrap up by mid-May, like they have to provide data report by mid, so. We should be done with that soon. And the legislative session is over, and so there was some communication as far as like what the outcome for that, you know, what, what the outcome of the session is gonna be, but it takes some time for them to translate that to like all the way down to the district, how that will impact us going forward, but. Um, I'll be putting that into the budget and bringing that back with more specifics on what that is for us. Going forward, I don't know if it'll be at the next study, uh, study session or the one after that, but I would like to have a conversation about, uh, like a student yield policy as far as, you know, what do we provide for students, uh, when they go on curricular trips or sports trips? Right now, it's kind of like five dollars, seven dollars, you know, something, it's not really covering a lot. Uh, but also who pays for it? How do we do that? Is it okay giving them cash? Like just some of the overall things, uh, what the board stands is on that. Uh, also, Casey Blair has put together a uniform rotation, so I just wanted to kind of run that by you. And as we go into budget, things like that are gonna be important, because either we have to increase fundraising or consider that in the next levy. And also support for state competitions, I've mentioned, you know, mentioned this briefly, but do we require students to do a hundred percent fundraising? Uh, do we want to put that in the budget? So if a student is going to, you know, state or nationals, um, how much funding do we want to set aside for that? It's kind of like the global conversation, and then I'll get into the NIT group after that, uh, but I just wanted, you know, start the conversation. Um, I will probably end up having to have Craig come in a little bit more to help me with the budget. Um, he did come in to help with the, uh, the financial notes for the audit. I was hoping to not have to need help, but I, I need help. Um, though he might come in, um, or might reach out to the ESPN or someone else too, so just so you know, uh, you will see that. Also, ASB, so I'll be sending out notices to all of the club advisors and a meeting with Casey tomorrow, uh, to go over the club budgets. This will be the first time, my understanding, those don't normally come to the board, but by law, they have to come to the board. Uh, so you will see every place, all AFC clubs and sports budgets in detail. Um, and that will open the conversation too for fundraisers, you know, we talked about like a calendar, annual calendar, knowing what all of our fundraisers are. And at that detail level, so then things don't have to come back at mid-year. We have an idea of what the district will look like. And so my goal is to bring those back to you by May twenty-fourth. So that if there's any changes based on your feedback, we'll have that in time, uh, before we approve the final budget for the summer. So, um. Lots going on.
I just want to praise Amy. Um, she, she's transitioned excellently. And, um, this is a heavy, very, very heavy time of year. During COVID, the, the auditor's office seemed to pull back a little bit, now that we're through COVID. Um, you know, it's their regular D, D audits, and so that as well as, um, all the budgeting and the considerations that go into that. I just put it on the board's radar and start thinking about levy again. Um, you know, and so there will be some decisions at some point that, I, I don't know if you want to do a community focus group. Or if you want to bring it up at some, a special meeting, but all those conversations will be happening in the, in the near future. Um, but Amy's just done a terrific job and she continues to just, uh, burn the midnight oil, um, and get after it, and so. It, and, uh, yeah, so being a processor person, um, we knew that she would do that, and so, um, yeah, she's done a great job.
Good job.
I had a question, enrollment numbers. So I know in March, we had a bump that we attributed to, um, the enrollment of the free K students, the new kindergarten program. But now for April, we're back down to almost where we were in February, so do, and that's a loss of fourteen students. Do we attribute that to anything?
And so there is a report that shows like the withdrawals, so the new students, and so that does kind of weigh it out. So we had thirty-three students leaving, twenty-one moved out of the district, three, uh, started homeschool. Five moved to graduation alliance, like they transitioned to that, and then twenty-one, uh, twenty-one. I don't know why I said twenty-one day, but I think it's twenty days, not attendance, that automatically drops, which is my understanding, we're going away from that. I just talked to Deanna about that this week. And that we will no longer be withdrawing students if they haven't attended for twenty days, because the goal is to, reach out to them and, and get them, um, get them involved again, so. That could impact, we could get them back.
There was an article in the Seattle Times, I think it was over the weekend, and they were talking about, uh, due to their declining enrollment in the Seattle Public School District. That their break number for closing their elementary schools is three hundred students, that if they have less than three hundred students, they're not financially stable and I was, viable. And I was wondering if we have that, do we have like a number for each school? If enrollment is below this number, do we start saying, okay, this is a crisis? And we're gonna have to start thinking about relocating and moving kids or doing something. I mean, do we have, are we in that sort of a situation at this time?
I don't think I had those calculations that are, that we, we developed in the past. I will ask Craig if he has any models, that I'd be more than happy to create. As we go budget, but that's pretty easy to do. We just have to know what our baseline is and then play.
If I could comment on that, I would just say that Seattle has, you know, so many schools to distribute kids over. Like if we just don't, we don't have, space at schools at this point unless, unless two schools really dropped. Like if two schools really dropped in numbers, or even if all three did, then potentially that's something you could look at, but we don't have, you know, I don't know how many elementaries they have, but it's a lot to distribute those kids over.
I can forward that article on. It was interesting. It talked about, not just, you know, space wise, but like, okay, below that enrollment, we cannot afford the administration at, at each, like the cost that doubled up. But it's, it was, I thought it was a good read. I thought it was interesting. It wasn't something I talked, thought about before.
Yeah, we, it definitely, there's definitely a cost of doing business with smaller schools, because we're providing the same services. At our schools, almost identical regardless of the size of the school.
And we'll say we are trying to start looking, we're trying to realign our product to the prototypical school funding model, with our staffing. So in the past, it's just kind of been knee-based real quick, filling holes or, or hey, we need some of this, this building. Uh, but we're really trying to start kind of drawing that back. If they're underfunded at one school, we're trying to get, positions to be funnel to that school, and if they're overfunded, we're trying to pull, like we're, you know, we're trying to align it more with that model. We do have the full flexibility to put the teachers where we need, and, and personnel. Uh, or where we feel that they need to be, like that's, as the board and superintendent gets to make those decisions. Um, but from an overall staffing perspective, we are trying to do that. I mean, it's, the model's there for a reason. It doesn't fully make sense, because you can't have partial people. It doesn't, it doesn't always work well. Uh, but we are trying to kind of realign our district. That's probably a three-year plan. It takes, it really takes time and interships and things like that, three years to really. That will be in consideration for the levy as well, because the levy funds the excess positions, anything over. We'd be happy to get more of that one, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Amy? Deanna's turn again.
Of course, because I haven't talked to her. Jesse sent me a text, remind me about YVC. We actually have two teaching contracts with YVC and CBC, because they have bachelor programs now. YVC is doing a K elementary and CBC is doing a pre-K third grade. And we have had student teachers, we're getting our first CBC student teacher next year, but we've had YVC student teachers for two years. We, uh, completed our third round of strategic planning, thanking you to the board and anybody who's out there in the audience that participated. Uh, there's still more work to be done with the leadership team. We'll be working on that, starting on that next week. So our new social worker, she's, she's just going gangbusters. She's full of energy. She wants, she just, it's always been her dream to work with students in this capacity in schools. And so she brought an idea to me. She's like, I can supervise, um, social worker interns. Um, people that are just, that have done their degree, but they have to do their internship like a student teacher. And so actually, you're gonna see another agreement come from Heritage at the next meeting, because she is qualified to supervise and we could bring in, um, additional social workers that are in their program to do things like groups, and things like that. They'll start doing like, um, in the latter half of the year, groups, small, uh, maybe small groups, maybe some one-on-one counseling. So that would provide us extra, um, mental health supports that we won't have to pay for. Um, and they would be people that would come in and they, they intern two days a week for the whole year. So, um, Maria feels like she could, um, supervise too. And so that, that's something that we're looking forward to next year. The sexual health committee met last night. We're hoping it's the last meeting. Um, we have everything ready, or, uh, all the decisions made about what we're doing and all the lessons lined up, but there's some, um, editing, some marking for Proster School Districts and things that have to be done in my office. So, um, we're gonna, I'm, I'm hoping that we can be able to get that done next week, and then we would be able to, uh, bring it to the board as information item and open our public review time. Um, and then, and then down the road, we would have to, we would look at adoption, uh, the board would be making that decision. Um, TK numbers are looking good. Um, they're actually looking great for, for two classes at this point, so. Um, we're, uh, I've got, just gotta talk Matt into opening the other TK, TK teacher position. I, um, Kevin Gilman's, chomping at the bit to, to hire a teacher. Um, so it's, it's, it's good. We are collaborating with Ecap, um, with our early learning form. But, um, we have, we have a lot of kids. Um, in addition, on May eleventh at six o'clock, we're going to do our first, um, early learning night that is for anybody with kids zero to five that aren't in kindergarten. Um, they'll be, we'll be giving away, uh, free backpacks with manipulatives like counting bears and, um, different things that, that, that littles can use, and we're gonna teach the parents, how to use them with their kids to help them develop their kindergarten readiness skills and, in counting and, um, colors and all kinds of things. So I'm pretty excited about that. We're partnering also with Ecap, um, on that. Um, and so May eleventh at six o'clock at Riverview. So that's, that's exciting. Because we have to do more, uh, with our kids before they get to Kinder, so they don't have to start school behind. And that's all for me.
Any questions for Deanna? Alright, Matt, you're up.
Uh, I'll leave out a few things. I just wanted to bring Deanna on strategic planning. Monday night, we had a meeting, so we're closing in on that. Um, I will tell the board that some of the things that have been identified by those committees and by the community, um, there, there are, there are different components attached to them, and whether it's curriculum, whether it's, uh, reducing class size, and so there's money attached to those, those items. Um, with that being said, and as we start to go into budgeting, I think, uh, it'd be advantageous to, kind of keep a mindset around redesigning, um, or how we restructure something so that, you know, the dollars can be used, uh, most effectively and most efficiently. Um, we're closing in on two negotiated agreements. One with the Process Coaches Association, and we have a TA with the Secretaries, um, Union, which we'll be bringing to the board. Uh, there's a pack meeting this Friday, uh, migrant pack meeting. Um, I will be flipping hamburgers. And so if you'd like to show up, uh, I know Jason, um, and I think Peggy and Jeannie were there last time. But usually is a pretty good time, and then, um, our principals are just hard at work closing down and, focusing on the end of the year and making sure the students, I give what they need. And that's all I had.
So pack meeting at six thirty or six? Thank you. Any questions for Matt? Okay, uh, board reports. Genie, we'll start with you.
Okay, I just have a couple of quick things. Um, the thirteenth, I sat in on an interview for a substitute security, um, personnel with Glenn and Scott and, um, very interesting interviews. I, I enjoyed the questions and I think we've got some really good candidates the last two interviews. And we'll probably be hearing from Glenn and Scott on them. Uh, the fourteenth, I went to the Honor Society induction. We should be proud. The fourteenth, I went to the Honor Society induction. We should be proud. We have so many kids that pull those high grades to get into Honor Society. The website, I like, I'm liking the look. I like the pictures out there, the marching band, and I appreciate the personnel, the changes that we're highlighting different people. I want to commend our student board, and are you out there recruiting people? They, these three have done a great job for us, and I, I'm getting the word out, telling people, see if your kids are interested. And that's it.
I, I want to thank Deanna for the strategic planning meeting that we had on Monday. It was very well attended again, and the, the information that the four different groups pulled together, it was a little over two hours, but we worked hard and just the information that the groups are getting is really good. It's, it's lots of hard work, but, but the information is really good, and we're moving ahead. I'm planning to attend the migrant PAC meeting that is Friday night, and those are always a lot of fun. It's a good way to connect with our Hispanic families and the student, the student reps. Now, is there, I know that Noah, you are going to be just a senior next year, is that correct? Are you going to apply again?
I'm considering. I also have a few other options.
Because I know that you've been very active this year, and I, I don't know that we've ever had a student rep apply for a second term, but I would like to encourage you to apply, because I, I think it's really important to hear the voices of our students. And you've done a good job this year, so I'd like to, I'd like to encourage that. And then I've heard from several community members about when are we really going to get going on the facility planning in the district? And I just want to say that we haven't forgotten that. We know that as a board, we need to get moving on the Facility Planning Committee, and that that's not something that we've forgotten or put off. It's something that we realize we need to do that long-range facility planning. And it, it, it's there, it's in the works. We're not going to, we're not going to forget about it. We just, we're gonna get to it this summer, right, Mr. President?
Better believe it.
Okay.
Is that it? Lisa?
I would, I don't know if Deanna is still on, last meeting, I asked about the 2023, 2024 school year calendar, and we were waiting for the union to come back, I believe, has it been finalized?
Yeah, I spoke with Subray today, and she just sent Deanna a copy. And so we will get it published as soon as, as soon as possible. I think the PSE still has the right to weigh in on it. But after they do, we'll get it published.
With our teacher openings, are we, other than listing the jobs on the website, are we going to, like, teacher recruitment fairs? Are we reaching out and doing any outreach to recruit teachers?
We've really been selective about what positions we've chosen to post. And so the reason why we're doing that is we don't know really how the numbers are gonna come in as far as budgeting's concerned. So we posted some, I don't think that we're investing a lot of capital in going out to recruitment fairs and job doors and things like that, just because it's so, you know, you're, you're all harvest, you know, there are tons of districts there, and you're all harvesting from the same population. So it tends to be pretty, pretty competitive and pretty difficult. But we've tried to get as widespread, you know, advertising and publicity as we can. But the big thing is, is budgeting, looking at that and being, you know, not overcommitting and then having to reduce it at some point.
It was last, it was last fall that we brought in a fourth-grade teacher after the school year started. And the year before that, we brought in, I think it was first grade after the school year started. So I just think, you know, it's not really, it's not at all fair to these kids that here's your first day of school. You gotta, you know, little kids are more anxious, maybe we're all anxious. You get, you come to class, you meet your teacher, you meet your friends, you got your desk, you got your spot, and thirty days later, we're like, never mind. Here's, here's your spot, because we didn't plan as a district. I hope that that's not going to be the case again. I know we had to bring in a fourth-grade teacher. It would make sense that we're gonna need a fifth-grade teacher, and I hope that is a discussion, so we don't have to shuffle these kids again after school starts. Track, the Rotary Track Meet, sixty-first Rotary Track Meet was last Saturday. It made fourteen schools attend. I know most of the board or all the board received letters today. I think it was Hanford High School track coach who's a Prosser grad says they can't come back until the track is replaced or resurfaced. My husband was flipping burgers at that event, and he said he felt like he was the information booth in the back that every, everybody came along, and I had that experience last year when I worked possessions, like, what's the plan for the track? This is, this is not safe. What's the plan? I think we need to be really mindful of that, and I think that goes along with the facilities discussion, same with the tennis courts. My last item is, we have three kids qualified at the state level at Bush, are we students that are going on to the national competition? And I think that's just fantastic, but congratulations to them. It's wonderful. I would like to see a construction update soon, since they said that Riverview and Heights was gonna be done during spring break. I don't know if it's done, is it done?
No.
So at what point do we say, this was supposed to be done in August before school started? It was supposed to be done at Halloween. It was supposed to be done at Thanksgiving, at Christmas and spring break, and look at?
We, we've, we've had that conversation multiple times. It's, it's, I, I, it is, yeah, I, it is frustration.
One time we withheld payment, and then they said, well, if you're gonna withhold payment, we're gonna sue you. And they still have not finished the school and don't have a full, a full workforce there during the day. I mean.
We can get Dan to your point to come in as a construction manager and give an overall update of Heights and Caribbe as well as West Strand.
I'd like that. It's late.
It's much more on target than.
Yes, different contractor. Thank you.
Yes. So just, just for future planning, we already missed the ability to do anything with it this next year, like just, I mean, the contracts are six months out and to pick it up and schedule to do the review. So it's limited, there's limited contractors that can do it, and that window closed probably in March to be able to do like anytime this summer or, or even in fall. And I could be wrong, but that's what I was supposed to be looking at six months ago. And so since we haven't done that, we should plan on the fact that that is going to impact any spring sports next year, because there's no way that we can get it done before spring next year. If we do proceed with anything, we can get it done next summer. But just keep that in kind of in the back of my mind. So as you're, you know, dealing with some of those claims, yes, it's a problem. Maybe there's more of a temporary solution that we can do sooner than later, before we do like a full track replacement. But that was, I was just told like, we're, we have to book once in advance, and it's only a limited time that they can do it, because of weather or.
Can we follow up and find out that for sure is the case? Like, have we already missed that window?
Yeah, and Dan, Pervo is the one who can help with that. And so if he's here, when he comes to do a construction update, I can add him to that as well.
Well, he would, isn't there like a specific company that comes in and does this track surface? That wouldn't necessarily be our contractor for the schools.
Correct. And he just has the knowledge, the working knowledge of like their availability, because he works with other contractors as well. So he has an idea of working with those contractors when they're available, how long we have to get them to go to get on their schedule. He can at least speak to it better, and then if the board would like us to actually start getting some newer updated quotes, we can absolutely do that. I just wanted to let, you know.
That's good information.
This is a long, this is a long range plan for that, and then at some point we have to, we talk about that.
Any other question?
I'm done.
Okay, well, you pretty much took my entire list.
I saw it.
I was like, what? I think, I think it's important that we get updated quotes or bids to get the track done, because I've yet to see a bid or a quote. And even though we haven't developed our, our facilities plan yet, I know we saw a quote for the tennis courts, which was actually another one of my items to discuss, and then the track. That way, we can have a budget, you know, conversation about it going forward. And you never know. I mean, there might, they might have somebody fall through. It'll rain on the west side and they can get over and do it. I mean, but I do think it's important that we get those quotes in front of us, so we can have a decision for this next budget cycle.
May I ask a follow-up?
Yes.
So I know the complicated piece in the past was whether we do like this. And the fancy, that's true stuff, or just a replacement. I think it's beyond repair, but just replacing exactly with what it is or leveling up. Do we want, so it's going to cost money to do the, like, the architectural review, and because of the drainage field, I believe, is once, once they touch it, they have to redo a lot of it. So the, the idea was we're gonna do this phased plan for the entire stadium. So the press box, the concession stands, restrooms, the landscaping, the handicap access, all of those things at once. So it turned into, it's not just a project, like this big, huge project, and I think that's where it keeps getting called out. But how would you like us to move forward? Would you like us to just spend the money and get this plan going and have these phases and know what it's gonna cost? Or do we want it to stop the bleeding and just address just the track surface for the athletes to keep running?
For me, I'm like, what, what I think is the most urgent need is that we have a safe track, track and tennis court facility for our students to use. Not, I mean, it would be amazing to have a brand-new stadium. It's also expensive. You know, oh, still expensive, a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollar fix for the track is a lot of money, but it's not ten million dollars. Same with resurfacing the tennis courts. Can we budget and do that and have it ready? We're not gonna have a new stadium in the fall. Nice, but not realistic. But so in my mind, it's, what can we fix and do to make it workable?
I agree.
Look at you, those quotes, and then like.
I think we should do it. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I want to go after Patterson and get our money, and then we can use that money. We need that money from Patterson. They owe it to us. They need to pay. As simple as that. And I say, let's get her done.
I would like to see a two-pronged approach. I'm, you know, part of the facilities plan, if we can start that work now, is to have an entire project developed and designed with cost estimates, et cetera, et cetera. But in the meantime, you know, the next year's Rotary Invite, we might have Prosser Track Team competing against themselves, the way it's going, because it keeps going down rapidly. So I think that's probably an important step to figure out if, if we can repair it, if it's a complete replacement, and, and look at those two options sooner rather than, than later.
But I agree with Elisa. The first, the first and most urgent is just getting the track where it's safe and.
I think the landscaping and the track, you know, there are other landscaping and safety issues that, that are, you can do and improve the aesthetics. That's been one of the things too, is that, since it's such an eyesore, you know, nobody's gonna get behind it. No, the community's not gonna want to invest money, because the district hasn't taken small, small incremental action.
Right.
So.
You think with have, with having Andy as the new maintenance supervisor, I do think he can take a little bit more of an aggressive approach to addressing some of these things, because he does have the knowledge of the community, and these conversations have been happening for years now. So hopefully that should help us with this project board as well. I'll put pressure.
Okay. Thank you. My last item was, we kind of lost sight of this again. This is another poll. We started talking about the discipline policy, I think, last summer, and then it just stopped. I think we need to revisit that. I think we need to make that a priority going out of this school year into next, so we actually have an updated discipline policy ready for the next school year.
Our administrators are working on that.
Okay. Then that, that's, that's all I got. Any other comments or questions? Okay, well, yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Patterson School, we, we, you guys talked about that last year early.
Yep.
How, can you refresh that? How come they all, I know we got kids going back and forth, but I thought that was all one, they're a separate school and district.
Now, let's let Matt address that. He's much more knowledgeable.
They're a non-high district. And so, non-high.
They don't have a high school.
Yeah, and so their students flow into our high school. Since they don't, the state has said if there's a capital improvement project and their students are the beneficiaries of that project, so their students come down from Patterson and attend school here, that they're responsible for a portion of this new high school, their tax basis. And so there's been a back and forth with how much they're actually accountable for that. Now, they've debated and said, you know, well, you don't, we don't even have to pay you. And on our end, we have said, if you don't pay us, we can consolidate you. Patterson School District will be a part of Prosser School District, and nobody really wants that. But coming to a number that's beneficial for, for us, now years ago, and this is Dr. Herbert, do you remember that name? He's just a fantastic guy, but he was one of the guys who had that conversation initially with OSPI and with Patterson, and that's how they built Art Fiker, which, you know, for years and years and years has been the envy, that, you know, the best football stadium in the, in the valley. We haven't put money into it since that time, right? And so part of the, we had a joint board meeting during the COVID pandemic with Patterson, and really, you know, their board said, yeah, we could get behind putting money into Art Fiker. And it is actually part of this, you know, part of this campus. The money that they contribute was supposed to go into brick and mortar, but as long as it takes place on this campus, it's defensible.
I think you need some clarification there too, because a lot of, some of it is on us. They've made an offer of half a million dollars. And the question is, that, that's gone back and forth on, is how that would be made, in a lump payment or payment? So there wasn't a, they're not gonna pay us. They've made an offer. And also, I think really, the main problem is, is when this bond was passed in 2018 and before then, there should have been an agreement, like, okay, we're passing a bond, and this is how much it's gonna be. This is what the Prosser School District's gonna pay, and this is what Patterson is gonna pay. But that didn't happen. At no time when, when the construction started, did it happen, or no time since 2018 has it happened. And I, you know, if you're gonna build a house with somebody, and I, Jason and I are gonna build a house. I'm like, we're gonna build a three-bedroom, two-bath house, and it's gonna cost three hundred thousand dollars. And I never ask you again about how we're gonna build this house. And I'm like, hey, Jason, here's the bill. And I added an indoor pool and an outdoor pool and a tennis court and a metal roof. And now my three hundred thousand dollar house is two million dollars. So pay, pay for half of that. I mean, there's no agreement. So I think, I don't know.
It was a cooperative agreement that was established, said we would come into terms with that.
We should see that. We haven't seen that at the.
And if it, if there isn't an agreement, then it goes to EST before litigation.
Well, I think we're getting, we're getting sidetracked. We're getting sidetracked. Which, the simple question's gone too far. So let's, we'll leave it at that, and we will recess this meeting to go into executive session. According to RCW forty-two thirty-one ten-one I, with no option to follow. This is to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency and the governing body or a member acting in an official capacity is or likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely or result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. This subsection one I does not permit the governing body to hold an executive session solely because a attorney representing the agency is present for purpose of this subsection one I. Potential litigation means matters protected by RPC one point six or RCW five point six zero point zero six zero two A. Have to read all of this. I forgot.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. With I litigation, it has been specifically threatened to which the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in its official capacity or is likely to become a party litigation that the agency reasonably believes may be commenced by or against the agency, the governing body, or a member acting. Or a member acting in an official capacity. Or three litigation or legal risk of a proposed action or current practice that the agency has identified. When public discussion of litigation or legal risk is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequences to the agency. And how long do you think we will need?
Uh just probably fifteen minutes.
Go for fifteen minutes.
And we have about five minutes to hit.
Yeah, five minute break and we'll start the executive session at seven thirty-five.
Thank you.
Hey Noah, I appreciate you reading that. I would just like, I would really like the board to follow the last statement. Where public discussion of litigation legal risk is likely to result in adverse. It states right there every time you read it that there is to be public discussion and no action has ever been taken. So that's what's stated every time, excuse me.
Okay.
So the question I have is if no action's ever taken, then why is there still legal discussion? Because we don't know what's going on. So just to consider, please.
Very enough.
Thank you.
Are you gonna take a break?
I will sign so you can get out of dodge.
I was gonna say done.
I just see Randy.
I don't.
Be a liar.
Yeah.
I think so. If she wants to hang out or fifteen minutes and.